Folks for joining, so our agenda this night is a little bit different than what it traditionally is. We start tonight with our annual budget hearing meeting, so we'll call the meeting to order. Dan and Kevin will present the budget hearing. It'll be time for any questions from the public, and then once that hearing is complete, we'll then transition over to our traditional board meeting. So we'll hold for the pledge for now, start the budget hearing now. We'll call that to order, and then again, when Dan and team is done, we'll transition into our traditional board meeting. So with that, turn it over to Dan.
Got it. Thanks, thanks everybody for coming, and anybody who's home watching, appreciate you coming out tonight. Mr. Palenti and I are going to work together on this. I'll be up front. I have been under the weather for about the past week, so if I run out of steam, he will, he will take over and make sure that you get all the pertinent information. At the end of the presentation of the hearing, we'll ask for questions from the board members first, and then we'll ask for questions from the community members who are in the audience tonight. We'll answer all those questions, and then Mr. Bishop will close the hearing, and then we'll move directly into our regular board meeting for the month. And I know that's a little bit of repetition. Wanted to make sure that all the information's out there for everyone. So, wanted to put up the first, the first slide says it all, and we added a few things. In previous years, it's been just a title, a title slide, but I think it's important to put up there, the 0% tax levy increase. That's an important place to start, and also let folks know that this budget- ... people live in our community, and I fully understand that, and so does the board, but I wanted to make sure we had that information out there. We're obviously the largest school district in Washington County, and one of the largest in our area. I always like to go through the calendar. We're down a couple of steps here. We adopted the budget back on April 12th. We're here at the public hearing, and folks should have received the budget newsletter. Prior to now, they went out back on May 3rd. So the last day after we finish this evening will be the vote on May 17th. That is a statewide date for all school districts. Certainly want everybody to come out, and please make sure you cast your vote. We want to hear from a lot of people, and we hope that you'll come out and support all the work that's gone into the budget, as well as the other items we're going to speak about this evening. So, some facts. Total budget proposed, $49,274,802. Budget to budget growth is 6.36%. And again, tax levy increase is 0%. So the question I would ask as a taxpayer is, how can there be 6.36% budget to budget growth, and no increase in the tax levy? The reason for that is because this year, Hudson Falls School District was not made completely whole, but a great portion of foundation aid that's been withheld from this district for about the last 10 years was restored to us. Those are programs and services that the school district students have gone without for, again, about the last 10 years. So we are working to add things that should have been here, back here, things that we lost over the years. We had many positions that were lost due to retirements. They just weren't replaced. There were not a lot of cuts of live employees. But certainly, we're building back, providing more opportunities for our students, and those supports like I spoke about in the first slide. What are we voting on? We've got a bus proposition. You've got four, four vehicles, and Mr. Palenti's going to talk a little more about that. We get 90% New York State aid on that. Sometimes people will say, do you not know that those are also our tax dollars? I agree, those are 100% our tax dollars. So I know that that New York State aid is money that we paid in in taxes, all of us. What I would say to you and our community is that we want to make sure that Hudson Falls gets its fair share of those New York State tax dollars back in our community for our children, to support our programs, to make them have as many opportunities as possible as they go through the school system and through their lives after school. So that's one, the bus proposition. Capital reserve proposition. So capital reserve is a special savings account that schools can have to save for building projects. So when you have a building project and the community approves it, you can offset, offset the local share of that portion by money you've saved up in your bank account. What I will tell you about a capital reserve is those are the most highly controlled funds you can have in a school. Taxpayers have to vote to allow you to have this account. They have to vote to allow you to fund this account, and they have to vote to allow you to get money out of this account. So that's, that's something I want people to be very aware of. This money is highly controlled by the taxpayers. Vote the money in, vote the money out. Otherwise, the school district can't touch it. I will tell you, we recommend doing so. There is quite a bit of work that needs to be done in and around the buildings over the next several years. We know we have a project already approved, and you're going to hear more about that during our regular meeting tonight. But we are asking folks to support the setup of a capital reserve. You vote on the total amount, so we can put no more than $250,000 in there, total, maximum amount, and we're asking the voters to approve $100,000 actual deposit this year. And certainly, we have two Board of Education seats. They are both five-year terms, so that'll be voted on as well as the budget. Some of our goals, we want to be transparent. We want to communicate about the budget. There's no secrets here. I'm telling you where the money's coming, so we can have a 0% tax levy increase and provide additional opportunities to support for kids that our kids need, coming out of COVID for certain, and those opportunities for high school students they needed, no matter if COVID ever happened or not. We want to maintain high expectations for our students, and for our school district. We want to include some priority improvements, including reading at many grade levels. We want to grow positive culture, and we want to support our teachers and other employees with professional development, so they can provide the best possible experience for our students as well. Focusing on students, here are some of the things. Increasing electives at the high school. We have added one teacher per subject area in the high school. One of the programs that I think is going to be very exciting, and it stalled a couple of years ago because COVID occurred, we're going to be adding an agriculture program here at Hudson Falls. We were able to do some interviews. We actually have a teacher that'll be appointed tonight for that program, along with other, other high school courses. Another one, maybe opposite end of the spectrum, we were recently approved for SUPA courses at Syracuse University in the high school. Those are great courses for kids who are, are high-end college-bound, or other students who are just interested in them, to take those types of courses here, at a much lower rate. I think the cost for the course is $400 to $500, and anybody who's looked at how much college costs for credit at places like Syracuse University know that $400 or $500 for the whole course is a bargain for those students who are able to access that next year, when those programs start. In the middle school, we're increasing and continuing to focus on reading, but we're adding some more staff to address that. We've seen that as a weakness over the last several years, and even prior to COVID. It's something we have to do. We aren't going to see better outcomes at the high school unless we can get more students reading on grade level prior to getting to high school. I think that makes sense to most folks out there. Big concerns in supporting our students with their social, emotional, mental health. We have increased access to psychologists in this, this budget. We're looking to increase our psychologists by two, and we also are increasing access to a school councilor. We're increasing a school counselors by one, and we're looking to target that towards elementary school students for that counselor. Right now, they do have access. We'd like to have greater access for those young people, so that we are able to provide what they need as best we can, as we're moving forward. And there's other program supports that we've talked about and that we're working through that are included in this budget, and we're including, we're continuing with our mental health counseling. We have counseling in all of the buildings, brought in by outside folks, but we contract with them. So this continues all of those things and adds to it for our students. Moving over to revenue key facts, I'm going to let Mr. Palenti speak to the revenue facts, and we're just going to kind of work together on this, moving through the rest of the presentation.
Okay. So for revenue key facts, basically, school district, Hudson Falls is a very poor school district. So we have two major sources of revenue, New York State aid, which accounts for about 69% of our total revenue, and local taxes, which is 26%. So when you look at those two items, it accounts for 95% of the total revenue that we have in, in coming in. And we'll talk a little bit more about those as we move forward in the presentation. Each year, we must have a balanced budget, and simply what that means is our revenues have to match our expenditures in order to place a budget out for voter approval. Another key item is the property tax cap, which is really a levy limit. We're going to show a slide and a couple of slides, kind of give them a background of this, but it's formula-driven. It's not really a 2% cap, as you'll see on the slide on where our caps are and what our tax increases were over the year. And each year, we have to do that tax cap, that tax cap calculation by March 1st.
And just worth saying that last year's levy increase was also 0%. So, the proposed budget would be the second year of a zero levy increase for Hudson Falls.
Here's our, our total revenues. As you can see, there's not much change throughout the, the structure of this chart. The big one, obviously, is state aid. We went up nearly $3 million in state aid. Now, 2.8 million of that is from foundation aid. That's what Dan alluded to earlier. Those are the funds that, going back 10 or 11 years, we actually had a state aid cut, and we're starting to get, we're almost back to whole on where we should have been with, with that over the past 10 years, and those programs that were, that were lost along the way due to that state aid cut. And we've also picked up close to another $200,000 in, in other state aid revenues. But as you can see, the property tax levy is a zero. It's a $12,703,410,000 payments in lieu of taxes. Those who are commonly known as pilots are going down a little bit, but we will be seeing an increase in that over the next couple of years with the new power line that's coming in. And a lot of the other ones remain the same. You know, the miscellaneous revenues, those are refunds, and also any, the refunds that we, that we receive from BOCs for services that we paid throughout the year, and then, then the revenues come back. And then you can see our appropriated fund balances and reserves that we, we use each year, moving forward to balance the budget. So you can see, it's a $49,274,802 in total revenue. Next slide shows the, the property tax cap. This is 11-year analysis. And in the middle column, you can see what, what the tax levy increases were by the district. The highest is 2%, and it goes down to zero, as you can see, in '21, '22, and '22, '23. We did a zero last year, we're proposing a zero for this year. But on the right-hand side, you can see what the actual property tax cap was. And this is why we said earlier, it's not really a 2% cap, because it's been as low as 1.7%, but it's been as high as 7.6%. There's multiple, there's a multitude of calculations that are done that can drive this, and, and basically, one of the big ones is, is if you don't go up to the cap, you can have carryover from, from year to year for that year that you do need to go up above 2%. So you can see, like this year, we're looking at a zero, but the cap was actually 3.64% for us. So that's the 11-year analysis for the property tax cap. And we have a pie chart here that, that really breaks out the, the three forms of revenue. Obviously, state aid is 69.52%. The local taxes is 25.78, and then the other piece is 4.7%. So you can see where we're very dependent, heavily dependent upon state aid, which is good for, for years in which state aid increases are occurring, but it's bad in years that the state aid cuts happen. That's why we were hit so hard. 10 or 12 years ago, we were actually hit with a $2.8 million cut in the middle of the year, and that's what we're getting back at this point in time during this year. On to expenditures. When we do budget, the budget process, we do basically a four-part budget. As far as it goes for the budget, we have to combine that into the three-part method, which is required by law. But you can see that in the areas of, of school spending, we break it down into four basic areas. The first one is general support, which you can see makes up 9.17%. Instruction, obviously, instruction is the largest piece of the, piece of the budget. That's the yellow for 50.37%. Employee benefits and debt service is the second largest piece, 36.06%, and transportation is the last piece, which is 4.4%. So you can see right off the bat, that 86% of our expenditures are in instruction, and also the employee benefits and debt service associated with it. So when we break it down into the three-part format, which is what we're going to do over the next three slides, we have to break it down into the administrative component, program component, and capital component. What you're looking at here is the administrative component, and, and most of these, most of these categories are self-explanatory. As you can see, this is basically the administrative piece of the budget. It includes the Board of Education, the central offices, legal. It also involves the principals, their secretaries, and then your non-instructional supervisors, which are your director of buildings and grounds, and director of transportation, and all the benefits associated with them. So as you could see, for 2021, '22, we have a total of 4.415 million, and for '22, '23, we're looking at $4,713,000 for $298,000 increase over the base year. The program expenditure plan, this is the meat and potatoes of the operation. This is all of your instruction. It's basically getting the kids to and from school, and everything that happens within, within the classrooms, in the educational spaces throughout the course of the day. So you have your instruction piece. That's, that's the component of all of our instructional individuals, whether it's teachers, aides, assistants, our special education costs are in there, and you're seeing an increase of $1.9 million there. And then also, district transportation and garage building, which is just some of our building costs for the, for the transportation department are listed here also, along with the benefits for all the employees. The benefits are the retirement costs, your health insurance, your dental, social, FICA, Medicare, and any unemployment costs are also listed within there, within that category. So as you can see, this category, we were at 33.7 in '21, '22, and we're up to 36.1 for '22, '23, which is $2,418 increase. The final component is the capital expenditure plan. This is basically our, our plant operation. So for all of our custodial staff, both indoors and out, and also all the supplies to run, to clean the buildings, run the buildings in an efficient manner, all of our HVAC supplies, things like that. And also, the other component to this is the debt service. This, these are bonds, principal, and interest. As you can see there, that's, that's actually going down from, from '21, '22 to '22, '23. We have correlating, New York State building aid also coming off at about the same rate. But you can see within the capital component, it's from $8,185 to $8,415, which is a $230,000 increase over the base year. And just as, when we look at the three-part budget, the administrative component, and if you have a copy of the newsletter, the budget newsletter that went home, it's right on left-hand side of the second page, the administrative piece makes up 9.57% of the total budget. The program is 73.35%, and then the capital piece is 17.08% of the total budget. The transportation department, as Dan noted earlier, there's going to be a separate proposition for school bus purchases. This year, we're looking at 265-passenger buses and 244-passenger buses, both gasoline. We have been, over the past several years, buying some propane-fueled buses. We've, basically, we had a goal of meeting a certain amount of our fleet being propane. We've met that at this point in time. So we are placing a lot of our diesel buses right now with our gasoline buses, moving forward. So there will be a proposition for, for 265s and 244s not to exceed $375,000 on May 17th.
Thanks, Kevin. And just, just bringing it back, so the items you'll be voting on is first, the spending plan, $49,274,802. Proposition two, transportation purchases of those four vehicles that Mr. Palenti just explained, not to exceed $375,000. Proposition three, creation of a capital reserve. Again, that money is under strict voter control. We have to get permission to create the account. We have to get permission to put that $100,000 in there. That's what those two propositions are for. When we want to spend it, we have to ask the taxpayers to vote yes for us to spend it as well. So that money's under strict voter control. And then we have two Board of Education seats. Both are five-year terms. And I do have, like, on the back of the newsletter, the ballot on there. So we have two people running for seat A, as it's listed on the back, Vince Canini and Ben Bishop, and for seat B, Michael Fitzgerald. So back to the calendar. Here we are with the hearing this evening. The only date left on there will be the vote on May 17th. We're hoping that we have a lot of people come out and, and, and vote, and, and we really want to see you come out and do so. And we're able to do in-person voting. We were able to do so last year. We're glad to have folks come out and vote. You're welcome to wear a mask or not wear a mask at this time. We just need you to come out and, and vote. So there's, again, in-person, high school gym, 12 to 8, absentee option. Mrs. Hensel can help folks with that. She's been sending out the ones that people have already requested. I think she's already maybe even received some back from folks. Those don't get opened until the night of the vote, not allowed to do so. So she'll be taking care of that on May 17th. And just back to this, it's wrapped around our mission, vision, and values, the decision-making process. So I'm going to start, I'm going to end where I started, rather. We're, we're looking to provide opportunities for our students to be confident and lifelong learners, and successful engaged members of our community, and, and the world at large. So that, that's the mission piece of that. Questions from the board members first, and then we'll open it up to anybody from the community. Nope, open it up. Anybody have any? Mr. Havens?
The first question is to you, Kevin. We're switching to gasoline buses and 66-passenger. What's the lifespan of these buses? How long do you intend to keep them?
We run them for anywhere from eight to 10 years, is generally what our turnover is, because we, we turn over buses every four years. We do keep some longer, depending on the condition of the, of the bus. You know, those buses, the engines will run pretty much forever. It's the bodies that, that we have, that we end up having trouble with.
We know the salt salesman is the best salesman in the state, there's no question. But the efficiency of the diesel engine over the gas engine and the lesser maintenance leads me to the question why we would choose a gasoline-engine bus, especially in the larger 66 and 44-passenger buses?
We still, we still do maintain diesels. We, we like to have a certain percentage of our fleet of, of the three different types of buses.
And those are requirement to go, we have, is it CNG or LP gas on our ones that are required by the state to get a certain percentage?
It's LP that we use, yeah.
It's LP, not CNG. So we've achieved that. So why would we have gasoline? That's a digression to our old technology, when the diesel engines, especially commonality in the fleet for maintenance, mechanics familiarity, and things like that. Why would we digress to something less efficient, even though the fuel's more money?
At this point, at this point in time, like I said, we, we've been trying to maintain a certain separation with our fleet with the three, and that's why we're, we're replacing them.
I understand you want to, but I want to know why you want to, is my, my question. If you can answer it, you can find out.
I can find out for you. That's, that's a recommendation from the, from the bus garage.
I'm going to want to know.
I will.
I want to know what their, what their reasoning is behind that, because it makes mechanically no sense. I can understand the LP gas portion, and it burns clean, and those, those gasoline-style engines require less maintenance. But when you get into a gasoline-fired gasoline engine, it requires more maintenance. Its lifespan is shorter than the diesel engine, and I believe in commonality in the fleet. Number of filters on the shelf, technicians, familiarity of what they're doing, to keep more of the fleet towards 100% availability. The other thing is, and I'm the micromanager from hell, we need some micromanagement at the transportation department. I live out in County Route 41, and I see a beautiful fleet of 66-passenger buses passing by, nowhere near capacity. I've questioned this over the years a few times, and I'm concerned. I was told once that the high school kids can't ride with the little kids, because they teach them bad things. I grew up as a Hudson Falls Central School District student on the River Road in Fort Edward, and they put the big kids with us, so they could, they would watch out for us, make sure we didn't do bad things. And I think that, that we need to get more towards mentoring, to the point that the older kids aren't teaching the little kids the F-word, yet maybe they're teaching the little kids some respect, and that we don't have to run three 66-passenger buses on the same route.
The problem, the problem we have with, with elementary kids riding with, with high school kids right now is the start times of the schools. Okay, so we go out, we do a high school, middle school run, drop-
What is the time schedule? I'm Fortland. I'm, I'm a school business now, other than being a taxpayer. My kids are graduated, so-
They drop off, the, the school starts approximately 7:30 in the, 7:30 quarter bait in the, in the-
High school.
Middle school, and then they, then they drop off here, which is like five minutes after. They'll, they'll drop there, and then they go out and they start their elementary runs, and the buses arrive sometime between, around, between 8:50 and 9:10 and-
So there is a big difference in the elementary time.
Yep, yep.
Well, that, that explains it. The other obvious thing is the cost of fuel is getting so expensive that I was just wondering if there's a way that we can economize a little bit.
And, and you make a good point, because one of the things we're looking at this summer is we're looking at our runs, whether it's, it's for elementary or high school, because one of the other things that's also driving that is, is the labor force, and the number of people that we have.
I know you have a shortage of drivers.
So some runs are going to have to be, we're going to, we're going to be looking at condensing runs moving forward, hence, which will have less, you know, as we move forward, based on the number of drivers that we have, simply.
Well, that would be wonderful, have a forced efficiency, because I think it's going to give us an economy of scale. It's going to save money on transportation, and those of us that don't have kids in the district anymore, but pay an egregious amount of tax, we're concerned how you spend every penny of our money, every penny. Now, that brings me to the meat and potatoes of my question. A nearly $3 million increase in our budget, and a zero tax levy increase makes me think that Santa Claus has come and dropped a little money in the account. Explain to me how we have more money. Put it in layman's terms, because you can't fool me with the numbers, but you can fool me how you got them. How do we have $3 million more in budget with no more tax levy increase?
We have $3 million more, because within state aid, okay, state aid is a broad umbrella. But there's one component of state aid which is huge. It's the largest piece that we have. It's called foundation aid. Okay? And, and basically, what they did, when they created foundation aid, over the years, I can take you back 14, 15 years, it was comprehensive operating aid, it was operating aid, but the function of it was supposed to be, based on your wealth, which we're a poor school district. We, we basically are, no matter how you want to look at it, twice as poor or half as rich as the average school district in New York State. So what they do is they, they had a formula, and they would come up with a, a dollar amount based on your wealth per pupil. And over the years, that ran. But what happened is, when they were attempting to drive money into different areas of the state, the, the formula stopped running. And then, right when Governor Patterson was in office, they took a massive state aid cut. We were in like, nearly $2.8 million that were cut and taken from us mid-year, not even-
I recall that.
You, you probably remember that. It was mid-year. So what occurred is, over the years, from that point in time, they gave people a 2.5%, a 3% increase in foundation aid over those years. But what they've done now is they've said, we owe these, these districts, and they're the poor- poorer districts, this amount of money. So, when they got all this, when the state got all this federal money and had the money at their disposal this upcoming year, they are now making us whole from back then. So, if, last year, if our foundation aid, let's say, was twenty-one million dollars, we are now going up to twenty-four million. Now, what's beneficial about that is now it's set moving forward. It's not like next year, they're going to say, you're going back to the twenty-one plus three percent. That is now our total foundation aid. So, any increases that we're going to get is, will be on top of that higher amount, that twenty-four million instead of the twenty-one million.
You actually have a guarantee that we can't go back on foundation aid?
There's no guarantee with New York State.
I, I, I.
I feel, I feel very confident, but one of the things that can happen down the road is when the federal money's not coming through the state, and whatever they're doing for their additional revenues may not work in the future. There's always, there's always the opportunity that the state can say to school districts, you know what, we're going to cut your state aid. But, what occurs in a situation like that, I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, I need to avoid it.
But, what occurs in a situation like that is, then the district has to react and make, if they get a state aid cut, they also have to make corresponding cuts, because we're so dependent upon that money.
It really is amazing to have a budget this size and that you cut it so close. I have to commend you for that. None of us like the size of the budget, but I have to commend you for cutting it that close, that you have to be so reactionary that we don't have a slush fund, if you will. I mean, just learning about this appropriation, I have to vote on, a little savings aside, really shows those of us in the public how tight an edge you're walking on. But, I don't want to see you build a budget to a level that we have this additional state aid this year and put in a program that I, for one, have wanted to see here for twenty-five years, an agriculture program, which we had one, and it was a great one years ago. My family that went through it. I think that's the greatest accomplishment that you've had this year, is to vote on that. But, to see us build a budget up to the level it is, to next year get some shock out of the state, and you're either going to shock us taxpayers, which we just, we're bleeding right now, you don't want us to hemorrhage, and/or you're going to cut positions. And that's the thing that scares me about building a budget up. I would have loved to seen us have a flat budget and have an actual tax levy decrease, but I guess that is out of vote with school boards across New York State. I don't think it's ever been done.
Can I add something? I think some of the money that is coming through the Rescue Plan Act is meant to be temporary in the sense that it's meant to mitigate some of the circumstances that came about because of COVID. So, like, the additional mental health services, they're hoping that in five years, we don't need those to such a degree, because we will have dealt with things with COVID. So, some of it is built in with the knowledge that we're not maybe going to need it in the next, it's not like we're putting in essential programming with the money. We're putting in programming enhancement to mitigate some of the COVID things.
React to current needs?
Yes.
You know, and I know there has to be COVID funds in here. Municipalities have received them, there's all kinds of reactionary money out there to help. And certainly, whichever one of you gentlemen said it, if that, although it's taxpayers' money, we want to get our share of it. Of course, if the state's got it, they're going to give it to somebody. It might as well be Hudson Falls, as Galloway or somebody. Listen, all we're trying to do, and I'm not trying to be a thorn in anybody's side, I think the school is the nucleus of a community, and it certainly is the nucleus of this community, but for some of us to have a life sentence here, we want to be able to afford to live. And reacting to two percent, on top of two percent, on top of two percent increases, just using an example because of the tax cap, that, those figures add up, and they multiply, you know, and they compound to a great extent, and it makes it unformal. The cost of living, the cost of salaries around here don't go up commensurate to that type of an increase. So, I commend you for keeping the tax levy the same. There's a lot of new taxable properties, there's some new projects coming into town, and since everybody wants to look at what I pay for taxes, I look at what they want to pay for taxes too. And I'm going to make damn sure everybody pays their fair share, because old Colleen's been having a big time with reassessments lately. And so, I'm just making sure everybody else is being equally loved as I am. And Mr. Skimmerhorn, who's building a beautiful complex on Dix Avenue, which is, I think it's going to be an addition to the community, even though people want to hate that type of a complex. If he builds it to good quality and he maintains an ethical standard, who's going to live there? That one's for seniors, which I think this community really needs a place for. And Colleen thinks that building is just wonderful, and she taxes the hell out of him, I'm going to be very happy, because he's going to collect money for rent every month from either people's unchecked book or from, you know, their family or social services or whoever, and he's going to collect that on that private entity. And I already made sure that he was not getting a pilot or an abatement or anything else, he's going to pay his fair share. And I can rest assured that it will be his fair share, because I'm going to know what it's assessed for. I just, I commend you for keeping the tax levy the same, but I just wondered where that three million was coming from. I just don't want to be here next year going through a great, big, bad tirade with six-hundred men, Matt Banshee's right along with me, when we've got a, you know, a seven or an eight percent increase that people just can't afford.
Yep.
I have a life sentence here, and I'm really proud to be able to call this my address, and I'm proud of this school and the efforts that you make. I don't think they're all perfect, but I do think they're all good people and you all try. So, just remember us taxpayers, which you all are, eh?
Sure, yeah.
I'm just going to add one, one piece of information, not to, so, a normal three percent increase in foundation aid for Hudson Falls, if we took last year's number to this year, would have been about six-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand dollars. The increase that we got was two-point-eight million dollars. So, there was an additional two-point-one million dollars added to that foundation number. I understand exactly what you're saying about what happens if they cut next year. Here's the difference. Normally, when the reductions are taken, they're taken equally across all school districts. Everybody gets a five percent cut, everybody gets a ten percent. What's happened is our new number for them to cut from went up by like fourteen percent this year. So, we're starting with a higher end. I don't want to have anybody upset, I don't want to cut program, so we talked about that with the board and finance committee, and certainly Kevin and I. We understand that we're at the mercy of New York State sometimes, but we're at the mercy with a new end. If they hadn't done that, we wouldn't be able to put these programs in that we're talking about. There's no, just no way. So, I just.
You're as austere as you can be, but still provide for the students. And commend you for putting in an agriculture program that we have, so many of us have so many years longed for.
Right. I appreciate agriculture. You know where I came from.
Absolutely. And I'm telling you, the agricultural community is going to support that wholeheartedly, and there's going to be more in-kind help for that program and for that teacher than you could ever imagine, and I think people are going to clamor to get involved in it. It's going to be fun, it's going to be educational, it's going to help prepare young people for a place where they can work with their hands, which really is kind of what's going to happen.
Yep. You got that in the notes. People are going to come clamoring to support the program.
Yeah.
I appreciate, I just, I don't know if you know me well enough, but that's, that's how I am.
That's the way it should work.
Other questions from anybody, anybody else, or, yes, ma'am?
My name is Donna Rockaway, and I'm a bus driver for Hudson Falls School. I've been driving for three years, I drive bus number one fifty-eight. My question, and Tim had touched on it a little bit, is what is your plans for retention and recruitment for new bus drivers? We are in a position right now where we have so many people retiring, we're planning on retirement at the end of this year. What's going to happen at the beginning of September? And you had, I think Kevin had mentioned that you're going to start providing runs and things, which I think is an awesome idea. And my question there is, is that going to allow, is this proposal going to allow for other bus drivers farther down the line to start being eligible for benefits? Because that's a very big concern of us.
That's part of the, what we're looking to do. Because if we have to, what we're basically doing, because we're going to have a changeover in leadership there, as you probably know, starting July first. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to sit down with all the bus runs, because bus runs have been kind of all over the place with COVID and bringing them back. So, we're trying to line all that back up, and we're going to use TransFinder, we're going to use any resources we have to, to try to line those up. And most likely, because we have a staffing shortage, and I don't, I don't see a whole bunch of people coming in in the future with that, all the schools are facing the same thing, is what I'm saying to them. So, what we're going to do is, we're going to have less runs, but the same number of children to transport, which is going to extend those runs long enough time. So, when we look at those people that are very close to the benefits and stuff, they will become eligible for benefits with those, with those new runs. So, the answer, that's, that's the second part of your question. Let me, I'll go back to the first part of your question. We, I actually sat down the other day with some people in the bus garage, and we are talking about, I'm sorry, I've got to turn my mic back. We are, we are, we are talking about different ways that we can recruit. We, as you remember, Governor Hochul actually sent the school districts a list of people that had CDLs that you can get in touch with, dah 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 dah. I sent out between one-hundred-and-twenty-five and one-hundred-and-fifty emails to people saying, hey, it's Hudson Falls, come take a look at us, dah dah dah. I got two responses, and only one person actually came in for an interview out of, out of all of that. So, we obviously have to take a different approach. So, we are, we are looking, I actually saw it in another district, and I talked to Aaron Cooper with the bus garage, and we're looking, we're going to send out like a mailer card, please stop by. We're going to, we're going to be looking at doing some, almost like an open house with the bus garage, where we can bring people in. We'll have people there from our staff that will get on the bus and let people try it around the parking lot in the bus garage, because we do have a lot of room there, different things like that. We're just going to continue to just beat down the doors on, hey, does anybody know anybody? Let's contact, you know, anybody that we know to try to drive, try to come up with more. One of the other things I'm actually looking at too is creating some positions that are hybrid positions between bus driving and maintenance, where somebody could drive in the morning, come in and work during the day, and drive in the afternoon. So, we are coming up with some different ideas here on trying to increase that staff level.
The reason, the main reason I ask is, as you know, all of our mechanics drive every day. Mr. Murphy retired in February, he's still driving every single day. We, we don't have a day to take off. If you're sick, you know, you tell us, if you're sick, stay home, but we can't stay home. And that, that's becoming an issue at the bus garage. And my biggest fear is that the buses, the mechanical end of the buses, I don't want that to get behind me. I'm behind the wheel of that bus every day. I want to know that bus is safe when I leave that garage. We had a bus breakdown this morning, and I just want to know, if I leave that bus garage, that bus is safe? Because those mechanics are all on the road, and the mechanics are all on the road.
And that's one of the reasons we watch, every, every month, the board gets a report on the inspections that are done by New York State. And we're at ninety-seven point five, we ended the year at ninety-seven point five percent passing rating, which is phenomenal. So, for the fact that they can do, they can do runs, and they can also in between, get all that, get all that taken care of, is amazing. But, that's one of the reasons why the goal here is, I don't want any mechanics on the road unless it's, it's, you know, it's one of those things that pops up, you know? But, the goal is going to be that we will be able to convert those runs so that we will have all four mechanics in the bus garage, whoever the supervisor is at that point in time will be at the bus garage. And I would really love to have a couple extra subs that we could, that we could have, and have them ride as monitors if we need to in those cases. But, that's the goal, and that's, and right now, I think that that's the only way that we're going to attain it.
Is through those different avenues.
Now, can I ask one more question for them? School dress code?
I don't know a lot about the school dress code, but I'll tell you something. Some of the stuff that's there, the buses that can't really be allowing this year, how is that going to change in upcoming years? Because it's getting really deteriorated. And it causes.
Issues on the bus, I mean, it seriously causes issues on the bus. So, is there some plan to revamp the dress code to back to where it used to be? I remember when my daughter was in school, that if you stood up and your arms were down and your shorts were shorter than your arms, you were going home. I'm telling you what, it doesn't even come close right now. It's just totally ridiculous the way I see some of these girls coming on this bus. And I just want to know what's going to be done in the school, because you can't, you know, you're talking about bullying and stuff, that's where some of it begins, on that bus. And we try, you know, as drivers, we can't see everything that goes on behind us. But, when kids come on the bus dressed the way they are dressed, because you're allowing it in school, it's just opening the door. So, I want to know what is going to be proposed for next year, to revamp that, that dress code, to make it a little bit safer for some of these kids.
Right, so, I'll speak to that. I don't have, I don't have a direct answer for you. And then I'll ask, any more questions in this portion be about the budget, just to keep the lines clear. So, there's a board, board-approved code of conduct that includes proper dress. If you have a concern with how a student's dressed, you should be reporting that, either to your supervisor or to the principal of the school. That, that should be taken care of. Nothing has changed, to my knowledge, in the last couple of years, where it's been said there is no dress code. To my knowledge, the board has approved a code of conduct that includes a dress code, and that should be enforced by the administrators at the school buildings.
Is this policy in place?
Correct.
Because it's a distraction to education.
Yep.
Or it gives an education of kind you didn't attempt.
Thank you. I appreciate what you're saying. I have a meeting with the principals, it's either tomorrow or the next day, so I'll certainly, is it tomorrow? Yeah, tomorrow. So, I can put that on the list of things to speak about.
It's just because, yes, we see them on the bus, and we're the first point of contact every day.
Correct, yep.
They're getting on the bus, off the bus, and they're going into the school, but it doesn't seem like anything's changing. Once they're in the school, you have a lot more people to watch those kind of things in each classroom than we do on the bus.
Got it.
And it is very distracting, and it does cause issues on the bus.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Other, other questions about the budget at this time? If not, I'll turn it back over to President Bishop.
Okay, thank you, Dan. You know, like others have said, just want to compliment the work that now yourself, Kevin, Mike, our entire audit committee, you know, for the public that's seeing this presentation tonight, this isn't just, you know, a budget season. I mean, these guys worked tirelessly on this year-round. We talk about, we'll be talking about next year's budget in our, in our May audit meeting coming up here. So, you know, thank you, guys, for the work that you've done, the transparency that you've provided. Again, you've proposed, you know, a very fair and balanced budget, obviously, for the second year in a row with no tax levy increase, that I think really maximizes opportunities for our students and maximizes our taxpayer dollars. So, again, thank you for all the work that you guys put into this. It's certainly appreciated, it doesn't go unnoticed. So, with that, we'll call our regular meeting to, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ben. When you're doing the budget workshops, when you're putting this together, is there a way, maybe it's already shown on the school website, but is there another way to remind the public that they can participate and know if that's going on?
I mean, we talk about it, it's listed on the school website, it's listed on the school Facebook page, you know, it's.
Maybe I just need to be a little more aggressive.
I mean, we, I'm trying to remember if we email blasted it or not, but, you know, that work usually gets previewed to the public in April. But, the board is talking about that work continuously in our audit meetings.
Once it gets to this point, there's nothing that can be changed. And I think the higher that budget gets, the more some of us that are concerned about being able to afford to live there want to feel a part of the process.
Sure.
So, I think it's important that, that we can have some input. Whether we can change anything or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Plagiate us a little by letting.
Sure, the board welcomes feedback, obviously. I mean, again, Dan, Kevin are really the drivers of this, and we obviously weigh in and try to say, yeah, you know, I think that's too much, or too light, or whatever, and try and provide feedback.
And, you know, it's, the bigger the budget gets and the harder times get, the more we wanna feel involved and certainly want some input in criticizing how you're spending money and applauding how you're spending up.
Sure.
You know, we're really, we go back to what I said, it is the no place to the community and none of us are against schools, but you may feel like it because of some of the commentary here sometimes, but what it really is is that we just want to be able to afford to live.
Sure.
And we ever go see an armored car following a hers? Well, we all want enough to get there.
Of course. So with that, we will conclude our budget hearing. We will call our normal Board of Education meeting to order now at 7:36. And please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so thank you folks for joining us this evening. Again, thank you, Dan Tean, for your wonderful presentation earlier here. First up is we have our approval of routine items in your board docs. You'll see the minutes of the committee meeting on April 12th, as well as the minutes of the committee of special education for the multiple dates listed, as well additionally the minutes of the committee on preschool, special education on 5/4. There's no questions or comments on those routine items, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. So, thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Amanda, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, great, that will carry. And there is also the approval of the special BOSI Board Election Ballot Meeting as well, this held on April 26th. We'll make a separate motion to approve that as well. Second, thank you, Amanda. Any additional comments on that one? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, that one will carry as well. Do we have any public comments this evening that aren't budget hearing related or related to regular school business? No? Okay. With that, we're gonna jump right into our committees. So first up is personnel. Matt, I don't know if you had an opportunity to review this, give us a personnel update?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a busy time of year for, for hiring and, you know, those, those staff that, that do the hiring, they've been on their toes and they've done a really great job filling the positions that we need filled. A couple of mentions here, administrative appointments, Lori Johnson, Assistant Director of Special Ed, Lisa Gunning Hogan, also an Assistant Principal. So congratulations to those guys. And I always think it's nice to just call out the names of our new hires to kinda welcome them to the team. I don't know if any of them are here tonight, so...
So both, both Lori and Jess Gunning Hogan are here. So Lori, Lori, do you mind just waving your hand back there, saying hello?
Absolutely. Well, I appreciate the opportunity everyone, but I'm excited to be here.
And then Jess, do you mind?
I'm probably more familiar face, but thank you for allowing me to stay here for my entire career. Started here and I'll end here. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. And some, you know, teaching staff, Shannon Gilroy, Ashley Dalton, Jay Avery, I believe, Maggie Hogan in the agricultural science. Actually, finally, Jenna Paul, Chris Doody, Mark Fromett, Jordan Leclair, Jenna Manzo, Ashley Johnston, Patrick Malone, Raymond Hummels. And I don't think I've missed any, I think that's all of them, right? So a big welcome to the team, so if they're out there listening, welcome the board.
Thanks, Matt. Dan, anything additional you wanna add on personnel?
I'm, I'm gonna reiterate one thing that Matt said. Thanks to the principals and the department heads who have been going like crazy. One of our goals was to push up our hiring timetable, so we're able to hire on the beginning end of things and not on the August end of things. So we have our team set so we can get them here over the summer and make them be a part of Hudson Falls School District and Tiger Pride early. And then have them say things like Jess just said, I'm here, I'm staying forever, thank you very much. So that's, that's what our goal is and our team did a nice job in working through to get all these appointments ready for you folks. We've got a couple that we don't have ready for you tonight. There'll be a couple over the summer, but this is the grand majority. And that's a lot to be said for the people who do that hard work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, this is, this is a, this is more than we've had, you know, this early in the hiring process and a lot of times, well, thank you for jumping on that.
Welcome Lori and Jess, congratulations as well. So with that, personnel is not by consent, there are no objections, personnel will carry. Okay, hearing done. There was not an athletic committee meeting this past month, but it does look like we have a resolution for competitive cheer. So Jeff, I don't know if you wanna take us through that, if you're going to, or you want Dan to?
Yeah, I can. So the board approved back in October for us to have a competitive cheer team. Prior to that, we, we did not have a competitive cheer. We were required to, to create that team and have a board approve so they could participate in sectionals. As you are aware, they went to the states this year in their first year of existence as a competitive cheer team and therefore we had to work through what the compensation for that would be because the old cheer stipends included in HFTA contract. We're not commensurate with the amount of time and effort it takes to have a competitive cheer team. So thanks to Kevin and the folks that worked on this, but you do have the MOA in there. It puts it at a Level B and a Level, Level B for fall and for winter time. And that, that group will continue to do the events they've always done, but they're also doing all these competitions on their own on the weekends and nights and evenings and were fantastically successful this year.
Well said. They, they've really pushed some of the other athletic teams to really set a gold standard of what a real athletic program year round looks like, Hudson Falls, and the results show in their, in their state appearances in their first year of existence. So, you know, hats off to that team again, you know, for this group, we've already approved this, this is now just the MOA that follows to back up the compensation changes. So are there any questions on the MOA? Hearing done, I entertain a motion to approve. So, thank you, Jeff, second?
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, that will carry as well. We do have some audit updates. Over to Crystal for our audit.
Thanks, Ben. So this is, I'll present the treasurer's report for the month of March. In March, we had 10.99 in receipts. A good bulk of that, that's kind of more than a typical month, was the spring sustaining payment. As we've heard tonight, we very much receive a lot of our income from state aid, so that was state aid payment that'll kinda carry us through to the end of the school year. So we should be in good shape there, leaving our balance in the general fund at 9.3 million and a total cash on hand of 11.1 million. The extracurricular account balances, there is quite a bit of activity now, this is again for the month of March, so that's nice to see. There's quite a bit of gate fees that are, that you'll see in there for sporting events, you know, interest fees. There's also the drum club production, some payments there. Those music club production, it was really, was really great, so that was another nice thing to see movement in that account. And then there's just some other activity as well, fundraisers and that kinda thing. So that's, it's good to see all the activity going on there. Just a reminder, we've heard several times tonight, we've got the budget vote on May 17th, so hopefully everyone will come out and support the budget on May 17th. And I, and also the review of monthly bills are in the board docs that get, if anyone has questions and notes.
Thank you, Crystal. Before we approve the treasurer's report, it might not have been, I might have missed in the slide, but just for the public, vote is 12 to 8 p.m. in the gymnasium, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just so, just so the public knows, it's 12 to 8 p.m. in the gymnasium. Okay, with that, are there any questions about the treasurer's report from the group? Hearing done, I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Amanda, in a second. Thank you, Heidi, all those in favor? Aye. Great, that will carry as well.
Before you move on, can I just, I just wanna mention out loud in our public meeting, the solar. So the district approached, Mr. Polency and I, or a company approached the district, Mr. Polency and I, about a solar project they're working on. It's about half in the town of Fort Edward, but the Hudson Falls School District and about half in the Argyle School District. I forget the name of the roads, as the board probably knows or remembers, maybe not because some of you folks haven't been around forever. Many years ago, this board voted to not allow any, any solar, wind or manure burning plants to create energy without specific approval of this board. That group is looking at a pilot or a community host benefit. We are early in the stages, but I wanna say it now so that you folks are aware. Mr. Polency and I do have a meeting with them again, I think that's the 25th. So more information for you folks next month. We, we know very little about it now, but we have been reached out to. At some point, there'll be a decision-making point for this board. The decision-making point will likely be, do we want to have some sort of community host benefit agreement or some sort of educational type agreement with this group? Or do we just wanna make them go to the town of Fort Edward and get a pilot and they just go on the tax rolls for our community? And we just need to weigh what's best for us once we see all the numbers. But I wanna make sure that the full board was, was aware that there's, there's something in the hopper there. Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thanks again, I prefer calling that. The other, the other thing that we definitely also talk about with, with regards to solar and pilots in general, is kinda coming up with either policy or procedure to, to kinda weigh which projects, you know, makes sense for our community and which projects don't. So, so that it's, you know, we have a very fair and kinda unbiased way to evaluate those things. So that's just kind of one of the issues that we're coming down with.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, all of you. Dr. Steele's not here tonight to do a, a transportation update, but the, the updates in your packets, it looks, you know, much like a lot of our transportation reports at this time. You know, the DOT reports there, 11 passing units out of 12 with one failure due to a minor exhaust leak. The bus was re-inspected, returned to service. And so our current success rate is a 90.9. There's different calendar years in the school districts, so the transportation calendar year, from whatever reason, it doesn't follow the normal academic calendar year. So we're, we're just at the beginning of the transportation year. I believe it's April to April, is that correct, Kevin?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that's why our percentage rate is a little bit lower than what you've heard. The DOT team, you've already heard about tonight, you know, really presents a world-class inspection rate and has for some time, so I'm sure that number will increase over time. Your trip report is there as well with, you know, sports trips and a handful of field trips. And then there's a manpower and assets update as well, as well as your fuel update. So there's no action needed, but transportation report is there for your reference. Dan, anything you wanna add to transportation?
Nope, spot on, thank you.
Okay. And with that, we will transition to buildings and grounds. I'll turn it over to Mr. Mark Gallo for a B and G update.
Thank you, Ben. There was a lot of really good detail in Mr. Ward's weekly update to the board, but I just wanna touch on a few details here, just to give you a little bit of background. On the building project, we did have the bid openings on April 12th. The good news is there were at least two bids on each category. The bad news was there weren't a lot more bids in each category. When it, when it was all said and done, we ended up being about 2.6 million over the budget that we had anticipated. So the construction manager, as well as our architect, has recommended that we accept the roofing bid and that we go reject all the others and go back out to bid. We're gonna look at modifying the scope of the project perhaps, if, if need be. This is all because of a lot of COVID-related things. There's labor issues, there's, there's a lot of issues getting materials. We know we can't even get the roofing materials until next summer. So there, unfortunately, there will not be a lot of work done this summer. There will be some, but not, not a lot. And, and the scope may be modified slightly and the timing will definitely be modified, but we do wanna get all the things done that we wanted to do within the budget, obviously. So a little bit of change is there. You will see that there is a resolution in your packet that deals with the bidding process as I just alluded to. The other, the other issue is the retention of an entity that will help us determine costs in a little bit more of a accurate manner. And, and the reason for that is really twofold. First of all, we wanna make sure that the new scope is going to be doable within our budget, so that, that entity will certainly help us to get to that point along with the recommendations of the architect. But it's also necessary, if we only do get one bidder in one of these categories, we will know whether or not that category has been bid in an appropriate manner. If any of us know, you're gonna buy something that costs a lot of money, you wanna get a lot of estimates. And that is the one, the one unfortunate thing. A lot of, a lot of people didn't bid on the project because of timing, because of their labor issues and because of some of the other jobs they had already lined up for the upcoming year. We feel that we have to get more competitive bids and, and retaining this entity will help us and our project come up with, I'll say, a little bit more accurate money. So that's, that's really the, the upshot of the resolution. We've had a very, very long discussion of those, of how the retention was, it is 90% doable. So that's a good thing and we'll have much better information as we go along with all the estimates that the project has got. Again, bottom line, we still wanna do what we needed to do in our number one priority, which is saving schools and interests, the building of the buildings. The roofs are cast, they're used to life, they're easy to run, suppliers, there's, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, which we wanna maintain that schedule. But we also know that it's gonna be a loop off, not done quite as quickly as we have hoped. We'd rather do it late and fast, and that's, that's really, really worth the service. And, and again, I, Mr. Ward, Mr. Polency, Mr. Keegan, Steve Whitman and our project have gone through a lot of work on this. And again, it's unfortunate that it doesn't pan out the way we wanted it to, in terms of the calendar, but we will get what we need and what our students want. And it will be a successful project, it just will be a work.
Dan, did you have anything you would like to add?
Just one point I'm gonna put out there, so the number on the cost estimating is $9,655 and as Mark moves through, we get 90% feedback on that. I'm just gonna round up to 10,000, we have $9,000 back in the day. And the difference being that you folks priced this project out two and a half to three years ago. Obviously, the world is different, so these folks can, but you can price this out based on current market trends in projects. And that's where the value is, is initially in the market. But it isn't a million, half a million dollars, it's 10,000 of which we get $9,000 back in the day.
Do we have any questions for buildings and grounds? Lot here, good stuff.
Yeah, do we know about when the bids will come out, or the next, you know, will come out again by, after they get things done?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, so that was a question I asked because I've had good luck in previous projects, bidding in the fall, when folks are done working, right, they're hungry for next summer, they're trying to line up. Well, some of our long lead items, like the seating for the auditorium, we're gonna look at July, June, July bid, which we've been told by our design and the special events, that folks will be looking to bid on next summer towards the launch. It was also said that we're gonna include there, we would allow...
My microphone's off, my boy Brett's coming down. That we would allow access to the building as possible to certain parts of the work as long as it doesn't intrude upon what we need to have to keep our students safe. For certain, doing this project, no matter when we do it, when the big bids come in the right way, it will be inconvenient for a period of time for certain people in certain places, but in the end, it's, it's the end, right? The end product, we, we gotta do it to get there. But so, late summer, we would have the next set of numbers and we're looking to let people start working even in the fall in certain areas if we get appropriate bids.
Additional questions for B and G? No. Mark, you had mentioned that there's still an anticipation of some work being done this summer, is that correct? And what, do we know what the scope of that work is yet?
Some cameras, some locks.
Okay.
That equipment was available immediately.
Okay.
That, that's part of the problem is, is Dan alluded to, the, the lead times.
Sure.
Some of the roofing materials aren't, we order them today, they're still not gonna be ready until my summer anyway. So that's, that's been a, it's been a major, a major problem and I think that, that's what was very challenging for a lot of these companies to bid something that they know they can't even get the materials until next year and how you, how you bid that appropriately.
And then the materials, they're state con, they're on state contract, so it is a part of the bidding process, so we can continue with that stuff because the prices are, are fixed through state contract.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the B and G update. We have a number of items that we'll need to approve as a result. There's no additional questions or discussion. You've heard...
even get the materials until next year, and how you bid that appropriately.
And then the materials, they're state, they're on state contract, so it isn't part of the bidding process, so we can continue with that stuff, because the prices are fixed through state contract.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for the BNG update. We have a number of items that we'll need to approve as a result. There's no additional questions or discussion. You've heard Mark and team's recommendation to accept the April 12th, 2022 capital project roofing bid from Monahan and Loughlin. There's no additional conversation or entertaining motion to approve. So, thank you, Jeff, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor. All right, great, that one will carry it. Secondly, we would need a, I would entertain a motion as well to reject all other April 12th, 2022 capital project bids. We'll move. Thank you, Mark, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Amanda, all those in favor. All right, great, that one will carry as well. Next up, you've heard their recommendation regarding design and capital management firms repackaging and rebidding the portions of our budget that have been rejected, so that would entertain a motion to approve that as well.
So.
Thank you, Crystal, in a second. Thank you, Jeff, all those in favor. All right, great, that one will carry as well. And lastly, you've heard the recommendation for the board to approve the schoolhouse constructions cost estimating proposal in the amount of $9,655, and empower the superintendent to approve additional hours only if needed. So I would entertain a motion to approve. Thank you, Jeff, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor. All right, great, that will carry. So that will conclude buildings and grounds. Thank you to the team for all the work that you guys are doing on this. It's a huge scope, not only for our taxpayers, but really for our students. So we're all eager and excited to get these capital improvements underway, but, you know, I think anybody that's in any sort of building trade right now certainly is empathetic to these lead times. I certainly see it in my industry, and I think many others are as well. I'm sure, Mark, you are, in your personal life as well. So thank you for the work you guys are doing to keep that with the board, as well as Dana and Steve as well. Next up, we have our policy update. I'm going to turn it over to Amanda to lead us through that.
Okay. You all will see, under first reads, we have one item, it's policy 7552, student gender identity. You can see the recommended changes, and then a clean version there. Again, it's just a first read for you all to see there. And then a second read for approval is our updated wellness policy, 5661. If anyone has any questions on either of them?
No. Okay. Thank you, Amanda, hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the one policy revision that's in second read as presented. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Heidi, all those in favor?
Hi.
All right, great, that will carry as well. Abuski Committee, I do not believe met this month, but Heidi, do you have any updates you want to share with the group?
I do, yeah.
Okay. So that will conclude our committee updates. We do have some new business. There is a class of 2022 field trip request to Boston. Dan, anything you want to highlight for this group regarding this field trip request?
Anything that we can do so that kids can have something that other kids have had in the past. I, oh, I really support these types of trust.
Yeah, of course.
Mr. DiCaprio, it's inappropriate to make...
Sure. Okay. So group have any questions on the field trip request to Boston, for the seniors? No? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the field trip request. Thank you, Amanda, in a second. Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor?
All right.
Great, that will carry as well. And Dan, can you take us through just the superintendent hearings update that you have listed here?
Yeah, so as you are aware, I've had to be out of work last week, and we had approved Mr. DiCaprio to do hearings in my absence, and we had not approved Mr. Plunsey to do so. I just want to make sure that we're covered. I don't plan on being out when something like that happens. Hearings have a fixed statutory timeline for taking place. Kevin has done them previously here after this year, and it's just he and Mr. DiCaprio both be included in your July reorganization this year, so it's just to make it so that he's available. If for some reason I can't do one in the next couple of days, because Mr. DiCaprio is on town.
Okay. So you've heard Dan's recommendations. Anybody have any questions on that? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve Mr. Plunsey to fill in in Dan's absence for superintendent's hearings. Thank you, Crystal, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff, all those in favor?
All right.
All right, great, that will carry as well. And there's also a committee on special education membership update. Looks like just some roster changes, but Dan, do you want to provide the group with what we need to know here?
Hey, Dan, just making sure that we're covered in case somebody else can't be there.
Sure.
We want to make sure that we have a proper team on at all times, so that we're not violating who is right, and we're focused, so we have special education, and if people aren't properly moved to the board of education.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Dan on that one? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the changes regarding committee of special education. Amanda, in a second.
Second.
Thank you, Crystal, all those in favor? All right, great, that will carry. And that concludes our new business. I'm going to turn it over to Dan for his superintendent's report.
Yep. Let's see what happened here. This might have gone to sleep. I'll check that again, Colin, see if it changed on us. It was one second. We know it worked. And if not, there's not a ton in here today. Thank you. So we have an awful lot of me speaking tonight. I apologize for that, so I don't want to spend a ton of time speaking in this portion, but I do want to just bring up, I like to recognize our students. We don't have any here with us tonight, because I wasn't sure how long we would be, and I didn't want to have folks having to hang around any longer than necessary. But I did want to bring up that we had Students Place in Skills USA, which is through both these, through our CTE program, so I like to just let the board know that us supporting those programs and those kids being excited about them is leading to them being successful in school and in careers later on in life. So we definitely had kids on there. That list is available, you can see it through your board docs, but we have kids who are doing great things. The other while I'm on it, Ashlyn Hutchinson is off at the national competition. If you don't follow, if you don't follow us on, or don't follow me on social media or our school, she's there. It is unbelievable that she's there, and God bless her, working on algae and killing algae using magnet, a combination of magnets and sound waves.
Yes.
So, and this is a senior in high school. Kudos to her, and kudos to the young people on here. We had a group in the crime scene investigation, we had Peter Dudley in power equipment, I'm just trying to get the names here, going down through, and Dylan Nash in auto vehicle maintenance, and Kamari Edmondson in restaurant service. So congrats to our students, and thanks to the board for supporting those programs, and thanks to our taxpayers for supporting our budget that supports those programs as well. I think that was my one, is that my one item?
Mm-hmm.
I just want to, I'll put out there, those dates, we said them 100 times, so the May 17th, noon to 8, high school gym, and then our next board meeting is on the 14th, that's Flag Day. Please don't forget. I learned that from a student who had that birthday a long time ago. When's your birthday? It's Flag Day. I didn't know when Flag Day was, but I learned really quickly, because he told me that every time, so now every time I see June 14th, I say it's Flag Day. Good enough, that's what I had for that.
Okay. Thank you, Dan, for highlighting those students and their success. It's always great to see our kids competing, you know, both regionally and within the state, and, you know, we talk a lot about non-traditional career paths, and, you know, and not only college-ready, but career-ready as well, so to see these payoffs for these young students is fantastic, so thank you for bringing those to our attention. So that concludes our regular meeting. We do have the anticipated need for an executive session for a couple of items. One, to discuss collective bargaining negotiation updates with our SRP group, and additionally, the board needs to, in May, meet to discuss Superintendent Ward's evaluation and any changes to his contract as well. So those are the two items for executive session. I do anticipate there'll be possible action on both of those items, hopefully, when we return from the executive session. So if you want to stick around, that's fine. I don't know how long it will be. It's only going to be those two items, and I believe that's everything. Is that right, Dan?
Uh, yes.
Yep.
And fair warning, if you are staying, I do believe we need to wait for our attorney, Mr. Larry Paulschwitz, to join us as part of our update. We're expecting him at 8:15, so we're going to have a little bit of a lull in the action. Again, welcome to stick around, but, you know, we're probably going to be at hours, I guess, or somewhere around that timeframe.
For sure. And before we go, I don't know if we want to get Lori a little bit closer to us, so you folks can say hi to her if you don't mind. And Jess, if you want to come up too, obviously, they've met you previously, but Lori, if you don't mind coming up, we'll just...
You don't want to walk along. I'm not shy.
I appreciate it.
But I do want to thank you...
I don't want to be in front of kids.
That's okay. Just so you can get, just so you can see both. That's okay. Just so you can get in, just so you can see both.
Okay, so we're back here in regular session now. So having discussed two items that we had for discussion. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the SRP contract to execute the collective bargaining agreement and the terms that were discussed in executive session for Dan to ratify that contract moving forward. Okay, Crystal, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, that will carry. Great work there. And then lastly, I would also entertain a motion to approve the changes to Mr. Ward's contract that were discussed in executive session and to authorize me as board president to execute that contract once prepared by council. Thank you, Amanda. Seconded by Heidi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. That will carry as well. And that concludes our scheduled business. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jeff. Seconded by Amanda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Good night, folks.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.